Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call our Common Council meeting to order. I will ask our awesome substitute clerk to call the roll.
Alderman Haas.
Here.
Laisa.
Excused.
May.
Here.
Probst. I'm sorry.[153.51][153.51](Laughter). Ryan Key.
That's going back.
Roth.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Barzac.
Here.
Shaplasky.
Here.
Nine present, one, um, eight present, one excused.
We have a quorum. Next you'll be calling me Mayor Bell.[170.01][170.01](Laughter). So, with that being said, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Alderman Haas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we dive into the agenda this evening, I would like to ask the Honorable Judge Murphy to come up and join me on the dais, and our new Alderman Tracy Stefanski to come up here.
I should say first that I didn't expect to come here tonight and find out that there was a new opening in the clerk's office.[233.23][233.23](Laughter). Sorry, I believe, uh, Mayor Ganz or those are supposed to be posted.[242.93][242.93](Laughter). It's a strict procedure that one must go through in order to do that.
Thank you, Judge Lucas.
Very well.[251.54][251.54](Laughter). You do mean senior. Just before we begin, uh, some of us who have been around for a while remember Rick Germeshausen. Rick was a member of this council from 1972 to 1988, served very faithfully in that capacity for all those years, and he did die last week, and, uh, it's a lot. He stayed in the city and was an important member of the city through some very, very important years. So, we mark his loss from the, uh, role of the West Dallas Common Council. We're here tonight to swear in a new council member, and that's one of the great honors. One of the things I really enjoy doing is swearing in the other officials, swearing in police-fire officers, and it's a great pleasure for me to do that. We are saying goodbye to Alderman Eitenauer, who served faithfully for his one year on the council, and his input and contributions to the city are appreciated, and we certainly hope and expect that he will remain a vital member of the community. We are welcoming another Alderman to the, to our city, and that would be Tracy Stefanski, who, uh, like many of us, if you really look back in history, there was a time when to be on the common council, you had to be born here, go to school here, hopefully not have died yet, and be elected, and, uh, now we have really the reverse of that, and it's a sign of the vibrance and the good health of the, the community. Alderman Stefanski has only lived here for five years. He grew up in Bayview, finally found the road to freedom and came to our fair city. Uh, he has an engineering background, he's a talented and skilled musician, hopefully not this evening, and will bring another different perspective, and that's the important thing about common councils, it's, uh, it can't be a homogenous body where everybody's the same, they need to be different, and, and that's very important. So, the skills and the traits and the experience that Tracy brings will really be important. What I've been telling, uh, members, a lesson I learned very early on in the council, um, is that you always, always, always strive for good policy, and policy is the most important thing. Good politics is great, but if there's a question between policy and politics, you must always take policy, and I think this council has done a terrific job, at least going back to, uh, 1980 from, uh, 1984 from my experiences, and that's very important. Um, your Alderman Stefanski, you'll be joining. I think the consensus, Alderman Weigel, isn't it, that the finest common council members in the history of the city of West Dallas served in the second district, and, uh, I don't think there's really any doubt about that if you come right down to it. Uh, there's no question, that's, that's a very famous seat, so, but it's, uh, it's fun to be here, and, uh, but it is all about Alderman Stefanski, and so I'm going to administer his oath, and, uh, he will then have a few words to say, and I know he will serve very well and very faithfully, and, uh, that's all we can ask of all of our officials. So, without further ado, please raise your right hand, place your left hand on your Bible. Please repeat that for me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
The best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the love of my life for coming up and holding the Bible for me, and, uh, for the wonderful friends that I have here this evening. Um, I have a very wonderful church family, and I love seeing all you guys out here, so, and, uh, any of the supporters that I've had throughout the election, and I also want to thank, uh, former Alderman Eric Whiteiner for a good, hard-fought battle, so thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move now to item E in our agendas, which are public hearings. We have one item this evening. Can the clerk read item number one?
Resolution to confirm and adopt the report of the city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvements of South 113th Street from West Greenfield Avenue to West Lapham Street, South 116th Street from West Greenfield Avenue to Union Pacific Railroad, and West Cleveland Avenue from South 72nd Street to South 76th Street by major asphalt resurfacing, miscellaneous walk repair, miscellaneous driveway repair, storm sewer relay, sanitary sewer relay, water main relay, building services, and utility adjustments.
Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor Devine. Okay, as she said, this is the hearing for 113th Street, 116th Street, and Cleveland Avenue. So, here's the procedures I'll go through quickly. Uh, I'm going to discuss the project's scope and cost, we're going to discuss assessment rates, methods of payment, uh, then we'll have time for comments and questions from the council, and then there'll be time for comments or questions from citizens affected, and then the public hearing will be closed and referred to the Public Works Committee later tonight for a possible vote, and then possibly come back here tonight, uh, for a full council vote, uh, after recess. So, here's the first street, 116th, 113th Street from Greenfield to Lapham, mostly a commercial industrial area. 116th Street from Greenfield all the way to the tracks, uh, this is Greenfield Park on the one side, and then Cleveland Avenue from 72nd Street to 76th Street. So, here's some pictures from 113th Street, this was built in 1986, thirty-three years old. Uh, the pavement joints are severely deteriorated, lots of pothole patching going on here every year. So, it's, it, the reason we're addressing this now is that when these potholes get too big, we'd be looking at reconstructing the whole road, so in this case, we're talking about resurfacing it. So, here's 116th Street, uh, there's a very, very bad section that's currently blocked off, now it's so bad, it's not even passable. Routine maintenance on, in this type of a situation is, uh, beyond what our crews can do. This road was paved in 1988, so it's 31 years old, um, so we're looking to resurface this as well. And then Cleveland Avenue actually was paved in 1957, so that's actually 62 years old, so that, that pavement has lasted far longer than, uh, anyone would normally have expected, uh, but here too, if we resurface it now, we can salvage what's left and not have to completely rebuild it from scratch. The project would include several sustainability benefits, uh, we would be using recycled crushed concrete from old pavements, recycled fly ash from coal-electric plants would be used in the concrete instead of mining for new cement, uh, new asphalt will be made from 20 to 35 percent recycled asphalt pavements to reduce mining and drilling for new materials, so it would be made of recycled materials. This is what the finished product would look like, we'd be putting a four-inch layer of asphalt over the top, we would be patching the concrete spots where I showed the pottles, we'd be putting fresh concrete in there, we would be fixing portions of the curb that are deteriorated and portions of the sidewalk that need to be fixed, but not all the curb and not all the sidewalk, so. Here's what the cost of all three projects together would be, the pavement alone would be $1 million. Uh, we're doing a little bit of sanitary sewer work for $38,000, a little bit of storm sewer work for forty, or $78,000, and then very little water main work, $17,000, so all three streets together would be $1.1 million. Here's how it's being paid for, the special assessments are paying for 35 percent, um, since it is, uh, two of the streets are commercial, uh, the assessment rates are a little bit higher, so we are getting a little bit higher percent than we normally would. Uh, the sanitary sewer utility is paying for about 3 percent, like I said, we're not doing a lot of work. The storm utility is paying for 7 percent, that, uh, both of these are citywide fees that everybody pays in the city, and then the water utility work would be from the Water Utility Fund, which is 2 percent, and then the General Tax Fund would be paying the remaining 53 percent of the cost of the project. So, here's a typical residential lot, a 60-foot residential lot, uh, the assessment rate is $49.38 per foot, uh, the homeowner would therefore pay $2,962. Now, uh, the bills for this would not go out until March of 2020, so you have almost, uh, almost a year. At that time, the payment options would be a lump-sum payment, or a five-year plan, or a 10-year plan. If you opted for the 10-year plan, there is 4 percent interest, um, your special assessments would range from $415 in the first year, 2020, to $308 in the 10th year, which would be 2029. So, why do we special assess? Well, we have special assessed for over 110 years, uh, my microphone's going. City residents have historically paid the full cost in, in the old days, uh, the residents paid the full cost of the road in front of their house because they were the only ones enjoying this unique benefit of having this paved road, but on this project, as I said, the, uh, the property owners are paying about 35 percent, or $400,000 of the total cost. Now, the assessment rate of $49.38 per foot is for any residential property anywhere in the city, doesn't matter how wide your street is, doesn't matter how high the traffic volumes are, doesn't matter how high the actual bid prices are, this is what everybody pays if it's a residential property. Uh, and by comparison, if the road were to be completely reconstructed, we'd be paying $59 a foot, um, for doing the whole thing. Uh, but I, the point is, everyone is treated equally, doesn't matter where you live, you know, 116th Street is actually quite wide, uh, Cleveland Avenue is much narrow, but, narrower, but everyone is paying the same rate, $49 per foot. For over 100 years, Wisconsin state law has allowed for special assessments, uh, there have been over 100 court cases in Wisconsin that have upheld the law as a fair and reasonable method to recoup the costs of these projects, so this method has certainly stood the test of time. Uh, another, other information on special assessments is that they are the only way that we can get any kind of revenue from tax-exempt schools, churches, charities, hospitals, county parks, utilities, railroads, uh, they all would be paying their fair share, no one is exempt from special assessments, even though there are 430 properties in the city that do not pay any property taxes, and many of these tax-exempt schools, churches, hospitals, and county parks are very large properties, which actually encompass about 28 percent of the total city's land area, so they only, they only contribute to the city's costs through these special assessments. Uh, like I said, businesses, corporations, and manufacturers pay a higher assessment rate to make sure that they're contributing their fair share, so their assessment rate is actually $61 to $74 per foot. And by way of example, on this particular job, Milwaukee County, we will, we will be billing them for $98,000, uh, because 116th Street does border Greenfield Park, so Milwaukee County will be paying $98,000, and then AT&amp;T owns this building over on Cleveland, uh, they do not pay taxes on that building, but they will be paying $10,000 in special assessments for the street, so they are contributing to the cost of the, the project. This is a map that shows those 430 properties, I said, that are tax-exempt, shows the 28 percent of the city that actually is tax-exempt, um, just wanted to show you this so that, you know, special assessments are often the only way that, uh, we get any funds from a lot of these properties, so, uh, that's one of the reasons why we do it. And this map shows, all the colored places show every property that has paid a special assessment in the past 10 years, so as you can see, it's almost everybody, at least on the east side, has at least paid once, and I know a lot of them have actually paid for their alley and for their street, uh, over the past 10 years, so everyone is paying their fair share, uh, nobody is being left out, uh, everybody is contributing through special assessments. And why do we pay, or why do we charge the 4 percent interest? The city does borrow the funds for this project, so the city is paying interest to the municipal bondholders over the next 10 years, so the city is merely passing along these interest charges to the any residents that choose the five- or 10-year installment or payment plan. The city is not making a profit off of that interest, we're just merely recouping the cost that we have to pay. All of these streets will be open to two-way traffic, we'll be working on half the street at a time, so two-way traffic will be provided, excuse me, we're not going to completely shut down these streets. Uh, on-street parking though, would have to be provided on, uh, neighboring streets, uh, on-street parking permits would not be needed during construction, as long as you're within a block or so of the, the project, the police will keep an eye on the neighborhood, and, uh, if you do need a disabled parking space, uh, we can provide that if, if you have, uh, license plates or, uh, one of these permits, um, so if you need a place close by on one of the side streets, let us know, we can put up a sign like this, and you'll be able to park close, closer to your property if you can't get in. Here's a little bit of the schedule, uh, we're hoping to have the plans ready to go to advertise for bids on about June 26th, then, uh, the bid opening would be on July 10th. The bid opening, uh, is, we, we, uh, we open to find out who the low bidder is, the city does not get to pick the contractor, according to state law, we do have to take the low bidder. Uh, then on July 20, uh, July 16th, the common council would award the contract, uh, and then we would hope to get going on about August 12th. Uh, now, there's three streets involved, so I, I don't, until we have a contractor, we don't know which of the three streets they're going to do first, but each of the streets would have its own deadline, um, and then all three streets would have to be done by November 15th. Uh, the contractor would post a performance bond to guarantee their work, and the contractor would be assessed a penalty if they did go past any of the individual deadlines or the November 15th deadline, so we would hope to get the work all done before winter. So, at this point, if there's any questions or comments, I can, we can hear them now.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Daniels. Are there any questions or comments, um, from the members of the common council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
As it relates to north-south routes, um, for neighborhood in our district, 124th, 113th and 116th will be done in August. When is 124th going to be done?
Ju- June.
Okay.
Yeah, so, it will be, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the common council? Seeing none, are there any members of the audience that have comments or questions? Could come up to the microphone and please give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Bill Rozga, property owner at 1513 and 1529, South 113th Street. How did, I noticed that on the commercial rate, you had either $61 or $74, what determined what?
The city assessors either rated your property as commercial or industrial, probably commercial.
Okay. And why the difference per foot between a residential and commercial?
More traffic, a business would have more traffic, and an industrial would have larger trucks, so they pay an even higher rate.
So, and then, do you have a specific plan for 113th Street?
We're still working on it, basically, like I said, we're just going to be covering it with four inches of asphalt, fixing the potholes with new concrete, uh, if there's any curb that's sunken or something, that'll be fixed, so I, it's going to look the same, it's just going to have a new layer over the top of it.
So, you said that the bids are going out, okay, and yet you've already made the assessments. Are those assessments fixed, or might those change yet again?
No, the assessments are a fixed rate, that, you know, like I said, it doesn't matter what the bids are, you know, you're, you're paying much less than the full cost, it's, it's about 30 percent, so the bids are going to be quite a bit higher. That's a fixed rate that everybody in the city pays, doesn't matter where you are, it's 61, if it's commercial, it's $61 a foot, everybody pays the same.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience that have comments or questions on public hearing number one? Okay, seeing none, we will close our public hearing, and we will move on to item F, which is citizen participation. This is a chance for residents to address the council on any matters of interest to them. We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes. I believe we're going to bring up a timer, but we will keep track, um, and we aim to keep this portion of our agenda to 30 minutes. So, is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this evening? And again, please give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. Oh, and I have a handout for each of the council members, who do I give that to?
You can hand that to Alderman Vitale, and he'll pass them down.
My name's Jim Curlin, I'm the president of, and CEO of Beyond Vision, address you want?
Yes, please.
1165 Hidden Valley Drive in Cedarburg is my residence. So, uh, as I said, I'm the president and CEO of Beyond Vision, and, and, uh, that package that I handed out to you, incidentally, is about 20 letters of support that we have from, uh, various prominent builders in the area, some bank, banking executives, uh, some of our customers, uh, several of our employees that are West Dallas residents, and so forth, so hopefully those will give you some better perspective. I also sent them to all of you via email, if you prefer that, so, um, my colleagues and I are here to advocate on behalf of people with vision loss and blindness and their ability to have what we call the dignity of work. Our vision statement, incidentally, is Beyond Vision will enrich the lives of Americans who are blind through the dignity of work. And as you know, uh, Beyond Vision is under contract to purchase the Walmart, or we're under contract with Walmart to purchase the former Sam's Club facility on Highway 100 and Greenfield, uh, we're requesting, uh, support for us to acquire and repurpose that currently dark resale store into a, a new campus, which we will call, uh, tentatively the Ability Center. This will give us the opportunity to grow, uh, not only our mission and grow jobs, uh, by people, for people who are visually impaired, uh, we estimate that we'll be able to grow jobs in our new facility, uh, by, uh, 200 or more jobs in the next several years, whereas currently in our current facility, we're cramped for space and can't grow our mission anymore. We also plan to invite to the Ability Center campus, uh, all of the other service providers to people with vision loss and blindness to co-locate, so in addition to the job growth that we intend to create for both blind and sighted, uh, employees, uh, we will, we will attract, we hope, uh, several of the other service providers to the field of blindness. That's sort of our model for the Ability Center, is to have sort of one-stop shopping for people who are blind. It's very difficult for a person that has vision loss in Wisconsin, um, to find the help they need, uh, because all of the services, be it Braille training, be it a job, be it, uh, help for blind veterans, being it, uh, all the various service providers, eye health, et cetera, it's all fragmented, so it's, it's really, really, really difficult for them to, uh, get the help they need to live a full life, and that's the purpose of the Ability Center. So, that's sort of our dream, uh, we're, I just want to mention that we're states, we were state-supported Wisconsin agency for 82 years prior to 1985, and as a legacy of that previously being part of the state of Wisconsin, uh, we presently occupy two state-owned buildings, uh, we have a dollar lease essentially for those buildings, however, as I mentioned, we're completely out of space, uh, both of the buildings are brownfields, so we probably wouldn't take them if they gave them to us, um, uh, they were not made brownfields by us, but by the prior, uh, prior occupants, um, and so that's the reason for us, or some of the reasons for us to seek a new campus. Um, I'd like to point out that with unemployment at these low levels in Wisconsin, and I don't know about locally, but I know in Wisconsin, we're below 3 percent unemployment, and every business leader on the planet will tell you their number-one challenge is finding people, so it doesn't make any sense to have that kind of a shortage of employees for all businesses when we have a 70 percent unemployment level for people who are visually impaired and blind. It, it just doesn't make any sense. So, we've, uh, looked for four years for an optimum location, truth is, it is very difficult for us to find a location with both enough space for the campus and located on major bus routes, and that's what makes this a really prime location. I've been shopping for four years, obviously.
Do you have one minute remaining? One minute?
Public transportation is vital to our employees, uh, we want to be good neighbors, uh, we are offering, uh, a pilot agreement, which guarantees not only the typical portion of taxes, uh, or tax revenue equivalent to the city's portion, but also support of the West Dallas-West Milwaukee school, uh, portion, um, yeah, we want the police and fire to take care of us, and, and we recognize that we want to be good corporate citizens and do that, and, and support that. Uh, we also intend to sell and develop an outlot between this former Sam's Club facility and the existing retail properties, McDonald's, Starbucks, T-Bucks, T-Mobile, um, that'll create, and that can be, uh, continue to be zoned commercial if you so choose, um, so this property would be set back three levels of business after that gets, gets done. I'm joined by three of my colleagues, and they will introduce themselves, I'd officially like to welcome you for a tour, it will blow you away, it will change your, it'll change your life. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Well, good night, my name is Kier Mobina, I'm do business development for Beyond Vision, and, uh, like Jim explained, uh, the unemployment rate among people who are blind and visually impaired is 70 percent, and I want to, I want to bring everybody here to understand what that means, and why, uh, Beyond Vision is so important for people who are blind and visually impaired, like myself, I'm visually impaired, I'm legally blind, actually. People sometimes believe that, uh, an organization like Beyond Vision is, is an option, is something that you, you could choose if you want to work for Beyond Vision or, or someone similar, by the way, we are the only entity, the only, uh, they, they are just two, and, in Wisconsin and, uh, in, in, uh, Milwaukee, in the area. And I just want to summarize my personal story. After coming from Venezuela and going to Miami with a degree in economics, we have a lot of background in business development, in economic research, and strategic planning. I start developing a successful career as a banking recruiter in Miami. My mother gets very sick. I quit my job. I take care of her. She passed away. And when she passed away, I find myself unemployed again. And I say, it's not going to be really hard. I mean, I have a lot of background, I have a lot of experience, I have a degree in economics, I know what hiring managers look for, because I interview a lot, I get involved in so many recurrent process. But you know what? I mean, making, long story short, took me two years and 1,500 miles to get a new job. So it's not easy. I mean, it's not an option. We really need something like Beyond Vision to be able to get a job, to be able to take people from benefit receivers to taxpayers. We are here helping companies. We are, we are the support, and we help companies in Milwaukee to grow. We help companies in Milwaukee, like Jim said, to face this challenging situation of getting people for machine shop, for assembling and packing, for call centers. Those guys on entry-level position that they don't like what they're doing, we have people very passionate about what they do, because they are facing so challenges to get a job. You just need to go to Beyond Vision to see the passion of the people that work with us. So we have the, we have the people. We have the, I mean, we have the job, we have the capability. But right now, we are out of space. Like I say, I do business development, I found more, I help companies to continue growing in Milwaukee. But we are not able to continue doing this, because we need more space. We need more space to provide more opportunities for people who are blind and visually impaired. We need more space to continue helping companies in Milwaukee, in Wisconsin, to grow huge companies, to support their operations, again, in machine shop, and assembling and packing, customer care, call centers. So this is a win-win. We are turning people who are benefit receivers into taxpayers. I came from Florida here to here to pay taxes, to be part of the community, to support my family, to support myself. So this is a win-win relationship. We really need your support to help us to be and continue growing and helping your community. Thank you.
My name is Mary LaPointe. I live at 1327 South 90th Street. My husband and I have owned a home here in West Dallas for going on 29 years now. We raised our children here. They graduated from West Dallas schools. They went to dance class and taekwondo here in West Dallas. We've got a lot invested in this community. And I just want to share with you what a difference it has made for our family, having a job that I can go to every day and, and learn to be more productive and be a part of society. We're just like everybody else. We're just like you. We want to work. We want to support our families. We want increased opportunities, not only for work, but for social life. And what working at Beyond Vision has meant for me is, we spend a lot more money in this community than we did when I didn't work. We go to jewelry stores, and I get expensive presents now. We get to go out to eat more, we get to go, you know, to the local establishments. We spend a lot of money in this community. And if we can increase that opportunity for the other residents of West Dallas and the neighboring areas, I tell you, people that don't drive, they shop, they eat, they party where they work. We're going to bring in a lot more business to this community. So it truly is a win-win. And it's important to me to grow this mission, because part of my job is training people. I help people that are new to vision loss, get a sense of independence and security, and have a better social life, and become better community members, become happier people, become more productive people. I want to grow that mission. I want to continue giving people the opportunity that I found at Beyond Vision, and I want to bring that to our community. That's why West Dallas.
Good evening. My name is Ruben Rodriguez. I live at 8617 West Greenfield Avenue, right here in West Dallas. And I'd be lying if I said I lived here for a long time. I've only lived here for six months. But the reason I moved here was because I heard this city was the place to be. And so far, so good, especially with the food. Let me tell you, it's delicious everywhere. And I know I can't really see all of you, but you can see me. I've really been enjoying the food here. And I hope to continue enjoying that food here in West Dallas, where I'd like to work. And I'd like to spend my money here, more of my money, anyway. And I'd like my friends to spend their money here, because I believe in West Dallas. And I truly believe that if you bring us here, we will be the tenant that you guys will love. I asked a friend of mine the other day, he owns a few properties, and I said, "What kind of tenant are you looking for when you let somebody rent for you?" And he said, "I'm not renting for you, I don't rent to friends." And I said, "I'm not looking for anywhere, don't worry about it." I said, "What kind of tenant are you looking for?" He said, "Somebody that's going to be loyal, somebody that's going to stay there for a while." We've been in business for 115 years, and we had planned to be in West Dallas for 115 more. So what I ask for you guys is just to give us a chance, and let us prove that we will be the tenant that you guys will love to have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this Okay, that looks like that will wrap up citizen participation. We will move on to item G. On our agendas, our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on pages one and two of your agendas. Item H on the agenda this evening is the mayor's report. I just have two things I want to touch on. I know Alderman Weigl has mentioned a couple times in prior meetings about the Community Improvement Foundation Gala coming up. There are only a few days left to buy tickets for that event. It is coming up on Saturday, April 27th, at the Zufar Conference Center. It is benefiting the project to bring a off-leash, an off-leash dog park to the city of West Dallas. There is information on the city's website. We have approximately 75 raffle packets assembled, and 90, it's getting bigger, and 50 gift cards for the restaurant wheel. Tickets are on sale for $65, or you can purchase a table. And it's always a really good event. We always pick a good beneficiary, and it's a really fantastic community get-together. So I hope that you will take a look at that information and consider attending or contributing if you are interested in seeing a dog park come to West Dallas. That's the good news. The bad news is that I want to just remind everybody that National Avenue from 92nd to 95th Street is going to be closing for Phase Two of the National Avenue Reconstruction. That is going to start on the 22nd of April. There are large blinking signs up there, so hopefully motorists will notice those when they go by and be ready for the detours. It's right on top of the finishing touches of the segment of National Avenue between 70th and 76th Street, which is finally getting the aesthetic touches put on. But then I will close with good news again, and that is that the contractor doing 92nd to 95th Street is not the contractor that did 70th to 76th Street. So it should be done on time. That does conclude the mayor's report this evening. Do we have any reports from the older persons? Seeing none, Alderman Haas.
Mayor Devine, I move for approval of the minutes of the Common Council regular meeting dated April 1st, 2019.
Second.
There is a motion with a second by older person. Ranky, are there any adjustments or amendments to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will now move to item K, and we are going to take up item three. I'll ask Alderman Haas and our Health Commissioner Sally Nuslock to join us. Sally is going to be retiring after over 28 years of service to the residents of West Dallas and the businesses of West Dallas, so.
I thank all, the Common Council President Lysick for being absent today, which means that I get to read this on behalf of the council for Sally, who has given so many great years of service to the city. And there are a lot of whereases, and here goes the first whereas. Whereas Sally Nuslock will leave office effective May 3rd, 2019, after 28 years of service to the city of West Dallas. And whereas during her career, Sally served the citizens of the West, citizens of West Dallas as public health nurse, assistant director of community health services, director of community health services, acting health commissioner, and health commissioner, city sealer, market master. And whereas, prior to serving to the city of West Dallas, Sally earned a Bachelor of Science in Nursing from Carroll College, and continually furthered her public health education through such programs as the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill's Core Public Health Concepts Certificate Program, and many others. I'm going to skip down to the next whereas. Sally served the Wisconsin Public Health Association Board and membership and annual conference committees, the Public Health Nurse Conference Planning Committee, and served the southeastern, as a southeastern Wisconsin representative of the Joint Wisconsin Public Health Association, Wisconsin Association, yeah. Whereas, Sally was an-
I know why Alderman Lysick left town.
He was wise. Sally was an invaluable member of the city of West Dallas committees and planning teams, including the city of West Dallas Executive Leadership Team, among many others. And whereas Sally was instrumental in achieving and maintaining accreditation status for the West Dallas Health Department and for providing leadership in the preparation of health departments, community health assessment plans, community health improvement plans, and departmental strategic planning. And whereas Sally is deserving of special recommendation for her many contributions to her profession and for making West Dallas a healthier place to work, now, therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of West Dallas that Sally Nuslock, Health Commissioner, be and is hereby specially commended for her dedication and service to the citizens of West Dallas, and congratulated for a job well done. Be it further resolved that the city of, the Common Council hereby extends to Sally Nuslock its best wishes for a long, prosperous, and healthy retirement. Congratulations, Sally.
And I have almost the identical proclamation, however, I get to close with something cool. Therefore, may it be known that I, Dan Devine, Mayor of the City of West Dallas, State of Wisconsin, do by proclaim May 3rd, 2019, which will be her official last day, as Sally Nuslock Day in the city of West Dallas. So congratulations, thanks.
Thank you, everybody. I'll be a little bit shorter than all the whereases and stuff, but I want to thank my family for putting up with all of the wild things that I've done in the last 28 years in supporting my growth in the city. I've had amazing mentors, coworkers, support from council, board of health. Every time I've come with an idea, I've had support, go for it. I've had a lot of opportunities to grow, and most of it was because of the team that I work with at the Health Department. They are the awesome people, so I applaud them.
Okay, now we will move on to items four and five. I'll ask for a motion to place item four on file, and item five on file.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Weigl, second by Alderman May. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item L on our agenda, standing committee reports. We have none.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
I move that the Common Council stand in recess until the adjournment of our scheduled committee meetings.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are in recess.[1785.04]